Okay, let's call to order the meeting of the Board of Trustees. Ms. Thompson, would you call a roll, please?
Mr. Thompson?
I am here.
Mr. Baum. Mr. Martin?
Here.
Ms. Brown?
Here.
Dr. Fellow?
Here.
Dr. Mann?
Present.
Ms. Wa?
Present.
Mr. Pack?
Here.
We now are at the point of public comment on closed session agenda items. We have one request from, I believe it's Martin Mejia. I apologize for not pronouncing the last name correctly, from CSEA, to address the Employee Employer Relations Closed Session Item. Sir?
Good afternoon. Thank you. My name is Martin Mejia, Senior Labor Relations Representative with California School Employees Association. And it is, as of the last 30 minutes, so as my understanding, that a couple of items on the, that were scheduled to be heard tonight have been pulled off the agenda.
That's correct.
And they will not be heard or discussed, so I just wanted to confirm that.
That is correct. Mary Dowell is not yet here. Can you tell us, Mark, which of the ones have been, are being taken off? She is on her way here, but she's not here as yet.
Okay.
Let's see. Actually, no, I can't, President Thompson. Let me...
There's only one left on, I know that.
Rick, did you, I think you had conferred with counsel about which three were being taken off.
You want me to go through the names, or you want me to leave, just mention the one that's still on?
Just mention the one that's still on, I think that's probably the best way.
Raul Gomez is still on.
The rest of them are off.
Okay. Okay, well, just wanted to confirm that, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the Board with respect to closed session items? We have our Closed Session Agenda Conference with our Government Code Section 549-56.9B1, Conference of Legal Counsel regarding anticipated litigation, three cases. Government Code Section 549-57, Appointment Employment Public Employees Interim Vice President. I'll not go through and read all those. Government Code Section 549-57, Employee Valuation Superintendent President. Government Code Section 549-57, Public Employee Appointments, Librarian. Radiologic Technology and Music Laboratory/Library. Government Code Section 549.57, Employee Discipline Dismissal Release, One Employee. 549-57.6, Collective Bargaining, PCCFA, CSEA 777, ISSU, POA. Mr. Engeldinger is the negotiator. And Government Code Section 549-57.6, Negotiate Unrepresented Employees of Confidential's Management Association. Again, Mr. Engeldinger is the negotiator. If there's no one else wishing to address the Board on Closed Session Items, we will adjourn into Closed Session and come back to Open Session at 6:30 this evening.
You have to keep it away.
The Board of Trustees is back in open session. There is no reportable action taken during the closed session, so let us begin, if we may then please, with the Pledge of Allegiance. And let's ask Ms. Hammond if she would lead us in that.
Repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes, the Regular Business Meeting of May 18th, 2011. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes, or questions to be asked?
I have a correction.
Okay.
If I can find them. This is on page three, where it says, "Dr. Jeanette Maier, trustee, attended the Student Success Task Force Meeting for the Reduction of the Number of Times a Student Could Repeat a Course Was Discussed." That should be "Attended the Board of Governors Meeting." And then the second bullet should say "Attended the Student Success Trustee." It's just, we just dropped one of the subjects.
Okay. Any other corrections or additions? Questions about the minutes, the meeting of May 18th? If not, is there a motion to approve as amended?
So moved.
I'll second.
Moved by Dr. Fellow, seconded by Ms. Brown. All in student advisory vote, please.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Back now to the introduction of guests. Are there any guests that we would like to introduce?
None invited.
Okay, announcements and recognitions, Board of Trustees. Any... I attended the Veterans Memorial Day Ceremony on campus last Thursday, and it was a very impressive ceremony, very, very nicely done. And it got actually, actually got quite positive coverage in the past in Star News. It was really a very moving experience, and so I'm grateful to have had the opportunity to represent the Board of Trustees at that meeting, and I wanted everyone to be aware of it.
Also, trustee Warren, I, we attended the Community Ed Center. What was that that we attended? Oh, their ceremony, their lunching, Larry Carroll High School Ceremony, which was real nice. The students were very excited to receive their diploma and their recognition, so it was quite nice.
Any other announcements or reports from the Board of Trustees, recognitions? Ms. Wa?
I just wanted to say I attended the English and the Language Award Ceremony. It was really great. It was really nice, some very, very promising young students who got their awards.
Okay, Superintendent President?
Yes, thank you, President Thompson, and members of the boards. I have two brief recognitions. And first, I'd like to call forward Joy Britney and the students from Upward Bound. And today, we would like to put a human face on the Upward Bound program. You will notice in your consent items, I'm sure you noticed, that there are several consent items for Upward Bound. It is an extremely important program in the college, and Joy directs it. And I just wanted to have Joy come forward, tell us a little bit about the program, and do a, do a little shout out for Upward Bound.
The Upward Bound programs are federally funded through the Department of Education, and there are actually two Upward Bound programs that are here on the PCC campus. Upward Bound Classic has been part of the PCC community since 1995, and the Math Science Upward Bound, which I direct, has been here since 1999. We service the Pasadena Unified School District, and then two schools in the Almonte Union School District, Arroyo and Mountain View High School. For the past four years, both programs have had 100% graduation rate from high school. We've had 100% college enrollment rate, and we have had over 80% persistence rate to graduation from college since the inception of both our programs on the PCC community. And we're also privileged to be part of the College Access Foundation of California. We, with wonderful help and assistance through the Grants Office, Nancy Roberts, we wrote for and received a grant, and actually wrote again and received a grant again for several grants. And so we're able to give our students each year up to $90,000 worth of grant scholarship money, so that they're able to attend the colleges that they want to go to. But you don't want to hear about me, you want to hear about this young man. Ernesto Jimenez, a graduate of Pasadena High School, came to us during his junior year. Ernesto was actually struggling in his classes and was not making the best decisions that was the best for his life. He realized that MSUB might be a good decision for him, and applied. We accepted Ernesto, and then put his spirit to the test. And we did this through a very challenging, extremely challenging course that we have. PCC has been wonderful in allowing collaborations to occur both inside the PCC community and outside with Math Science Upward Bound. And we were able to bring a special collaboration with Johns Hopkins University through a special program called Engineering Innovations. And what that is, it's a freshman-level engineering class that is usually taught to the freshman-level, freshman students at Johns Hopkins University at their Whitney School of Engineering, brought here during the summertime. So many of the community students from the private schools who pay a tuition will come, and it's a joint effort between Math Science Upward Bound, PCC, the Engineering Department, and then Johns Hopkins. So the community students will pay a tuition, but our Math Science Upward Bound students are able to do that program for free through the use of, of Math Science Upward Bound. And it is a very difficult course. It's a semester course literally put down into five weeks. These students live, eat, and breathe engineering for five weeks, day in and day, day out. And we decided to test Ernesto by putting him, and to see if he really wanted to go into engineering, and put him in this class. And he was competing with students from the best of the best private schools in the Pasadena and surrounding areas. And Ernesto realized that he was just as smart and just as good as any other student in that program. And because of that, his life changed. He was accepted to Cal State Northridge and also to UC Riverside, but decided to come here to PCC to do engineering. He wasn't sure which engineering he wanted to, so he started out with Civil Engineering, then changed to Mechanical Engineering, and then finally settled with Chemical Engineering. And has been a wonderful addition to our program because he came back and was a tutor for several of our students during the program. And then he also was part of a special project, we had a special pilot project that we're doing with supplemental instruction. And as you know, supplemental instruction is a college-level support service, but we took it down to the high school level, and Ernesto was part of that. We found out a, a few weeks ago, a few weeks ago, that Ernesto was, as you can see, accepted to MIT.
Wow.
Yes. He was accepted to MIT, and more importantly, he was accepted with a full ride to MIT. And then to put a feather on everyone's cap, not only Math Science Upward Bound, but PCC, Ernesto was also accepted for an internship at Caltech. And so he's going to be doing that this summer before going out to MIT, and he's going to be studying with, in the Geophysics Department at Caltech. So this is just one, but a wonderful success story about the Upward Bound programs and what we're able to do when we work together. So I thank you for giving us this opportunity, and if you'd like...
Well, let's hear from Ernesto.
Good afternoon. I'm thankful to Joy, because she's the one that brought me into the program when, when I was really struggling. If it weren't for her, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have probably studied engineering, because she, she brought me into the Engineering Innovation Course that really motivated me to study engineering. And when I was here at PCC, when I was a student here, she, she gave me a job to be a tutor, and she, she provided me with everything I needed so I could succeed and accomplish my goals and transfer to MIT.
Great. That's wonderful, and I certainly, I'm a little bit biased, but I think you certainly have chosen the proper engineering curriculum. But good luck to you. We're sure you're doing very, very well at MIT, and we thank you very much for doing so well here, and wish you the best in your life to come.
Thank you.
Dr. Rocha?
Yes, thank you, President Thompson. Is Ibrahim Neim here today?
Yes, I'm in the back.
Ibrahim?
He's in the back over there.
Oh, Ibrahim. Would you come forward? You know, in fact, let me take a point, a brief point of privilege, and get, oh, my good friend and colleague Ibrahim Neim from CEC. But trustees and, and members of the college community, like you, we were deeply disturbed, deeply disturbed to learn over the past couple of weeks that two Korans were burned on this campus. It is not an act of free speech, it is an act of cowardice, and we cannot tolerate it. So I joined with several colleagues and said, "What could we do?" That there is darkness, you know, when you do something like that, there is darkness, and how can we spread some light? And thanks to Ibrahim, I said, "For, you know, can we get two new Korans?" And he was kind enough to obtain them and gift them to us. And we're going to put these two Korans on permanent display in the C building, and, and continue to expand this as a display for religious toleration, and display, not just the Koran, but the Bibles and sacred texts from every religious tradition. And so we wanted to say that because, and thank the Board for its support in, in doing this, and I'm so grateful to Ibrahim for his leadership, and ask him to say a few things in terms of his very, very loving gift to the, to the college.
Thank you very much. And while it was disturbing to hear of the Koran burning, it's certainly a teachable moment. And so I thought this was an appropriate thing for the President to request, and I was happy to comply. He mentioned in his email that maybe I would mark a particular verse, and I, I failed to do that, but I did want to share something that I'm doing just as a, a part of my living. This is a flyer that I, that's published by some of the Muslim community, and it says, "How can any good Christian burn a book which contains these verses?" Now, I don't know who burned the Koran, so I'm not making any accusations in regards to the perpetrator here, because this was in response to the gentleman down, I think, in Florida. But because most people have not had occasion to read the Koran, I want to share just a few verses. This verse is on the status of Mary, that is Mary, mother of Jesus. The Koran says in that regard, "And remember when the angel said, 'O Mary, Allah has chosen thee and purified thee, and chosen thee above all women of the time.'" So testament to her status. The virgin birth of Jesus on, on giving tidings of that. Maybe people didn't know that Muslims believe in the virgin birth of Jesus. "When the angel said, 'O Mary, Allah gives thee tiding, glad tidings of a son; through a word from him, his name shall be the Messiah, Jesus, Son of Mary, honored in this world and in the next, and of those who are granted nearness to God.'" And then, lastly, there is a verse on praise for good Christians and Jews. And the Koran says, "They are not all alike. Among the people of the book, there is a party who stand by their covenant. They recite the word of God in the hours of the night and prostrate themselves before Him. They believe in Allah and the last day, and enjoy what is good, and forbid evil, and hasten vying with one another in good works. And these are among the righteous. And whatever good they do, they shall not be denied its due rewards. And Allah knows well the God-fearing." So I'm very happy to add these two Korans to, as a gift to the college, because you don't know this, I've already gifted the college last year with a five-volume study set. So I, I hope our students have the opportunity to read, to expand, and to grow, and this is just a small token of, of my love for this school.
Thank you very much, Ibrahim. It's very gracious of you to do that. Anything else, Dr. Rocha?
That's my report, President Thompson.
Okay. Shared governance representatives, Ms. Hammond?
The only thing I have to report today is that at our last meeting, after much deliberation, we passed Resolution Number 0006, which all of you should have in front of you in regards to the student position on the hiring of the new vice presidents at PCC. And so we wanted to pass a resolution that reflected the sentiments of the students at large. We heard a lot of concerns from many different students buzzing around on the Internet, as well as students that had come to our meetings. And so we passed a resolution to capture those sentiments, and we wanted to present that to the Board for your reference.
Good, thank you. Anything else?
No, that's it, thank you.
Martinez?
No report, rather, you have an invitation. You have a copy of this flyer to the annual breakfast sponsored by the Academic Senate to honor faculty retirees. You can see it'll be Friday, January the 17th, 7:30, here in the Krevling Lounge, and all board members are invited as our guests, and we hope to see you there.
Thank you. Dr. Douglas?
Well, I would also like to invite you to the Management Association Retirees Breakfast on the 16th, the day before, at 7:30 at Brookside, and you'll be receiving invitations in the mail.
Ms. Fullros?
No report.
Mr. Miller?
No report.
Ms. Chapman?
I just wanted to say that also about the Veterans Remembrance last week, it was both very special and very moving to see many of our students, as they were passing to and fro from class, come on, come over and join, to quietly join, and to watch, and to be very respectful of the occasion. It was very special, so yes.
Dr. Sugimoto?
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Actually, I have a report on the foundation later on, so I'll defer to that time. Thank you.
I was remiss in not pointing out one thing that Dr. Sugimoto was thoughtful enough to give to me earlier on. It's from the Pasadena Magazine, and there's a section here on, "15 Take Charge, Power Women Who Launch, Not Lunch." And she was thoughtful enough to put the page on one, this happens to be a woman named Carol Thompson. So, person of whom I'm very, very proud, and have been fortunate enough to be married to for quite some number of years, so, thank you, Lisa. Dr. Wilcox?
Just one comment, just a reminder that commencement is June 17th, and starting at 5:00 PM on that day is a reception for the commencement stage party and the 25 sum cum laude graduates.
Good, thank you. Dr. Jacobs?
No, thank you.
Dr. Van Pelt? Okay, then let's move on to public comment on non-agenda items. The first is Jose Alvarenga.
Hello, good evening. My name is Jose Alvarenga. I'm the vice president of one of the clubs here at PCC, and part of other different clubs. I'm the vice president of BAM, one of the newly chartered clubs. We are the Coalition to Defend Affirmative Action, Integration, Immigrant Rights, and Fight for Equality by Any Means Necessary. And I came here today not only as a student, but as a member of clubs, and as an undocumented student representing more than 700 students in this campus, that this college has done little or nothing to help, and that with the help of the clubs and the events that had happened with the student fee, we have been able to provide some help, and some reaching out to those students in a way that the college has not done. And I just want to point out the importance of the student fee, because it's a lot, it allows us to, to stretch our hands to those undocumented students, not only here in campus that are part of this college, but in the high schools that are thinking on coming to this school and seeing us a way of, of excelling in their education. Again, throughout this semester, even though it's the first semester, we've done events like, we went to a trip to Sacramento, we provided transportation for undocumented students, which was not provided by the school, again. We did a rally on public education to raise awareness in students. We did a Dream Act forum to raise awareness about undocumented students with, and the Dream Act, which is a bill that will help undocumented students, again, all this to raise awareness in the campus. We, and we are planning other events for the future as well. We want to do our own AB540 conference for undocumented students, again, to reach out to undocumented students, and this would not be possible if it, if it wasn't for the help provided by the student fee that, that we're allowed. And again, also, not only as part of a, a member of a club, but as a student in this campus, I've gotten so much from, from the different events, that other different clubs have put out different events from, of students, of different experiences and ethnic backgrounds that have made stronger connections among students, and have learned about other people and such. And also, like, our events have made it possible for us to reach out to groups outside of the community, that like the San Gabriel Valley Dream Team, a group of undocumented students, to create a strong connection with the community as well, and create the bound of students here at school and in the community. And lastly, I just want to mention that the elimination of this student fee would not much, would not only make it more difficult for clubs to put out events like this, but also would not alleviate the cuts that students are receiving. If the school wants to really take a stand on helping students with these budget cuts, could have done it by going to Sacramento and standing up to a 1.4 billion cuts that pass with little or no position of any educational institution in the state. Thank you.
Very much. We also have a card from Brittany Voloa. We also have a card from Brittany Vlloa. I'm sorry if I'm not pronouncing your name properly. Is it V-L-L-O-A? Or U? Okay, sorry. Thank you.
Hello. Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Brittany Vlloa. I am a student here at PCC. I am a member of MECHA, and I'm going to be speaking on the Student Activity Fee. As MECHA, we are a very active club on campus. We're probably one of the most active club on campuses, and we have a very strong history here. And that Student Activity Fee has allowed us to do so much throughout the years, cultural, political, educational-wise. Recently, this semester alone, we had a high school conference, which Dr. Rocha himself was a guest. And besides that, we've done things in the fall, like Dia de los Muertos, which has raised cultural awareness, and we expand to students of ethnicities and things like that. But I just really want to point out that this fee is really important to us, because without that, all the work that we do would not be possible. And besides being a student, a member of MECHA, I'm also an intern in the Cross Cultural Center, which is out of the Office of Student Affairs. And through the Cross Cultural Center, we put on cultural events, and that's basically to help students who are marginalized see themselves as leaders in the school and society. And all of those events are through the Student Activity Fee. And I just had an event I put on myself, which was Save Ethnic Studies. And that was a really great event, which was promoting Saving Ethnic Studies in Arizona, and raising awareness about that. And I just want to point out again that, sorry, that the Student Activity Fee has really, really helped the program. And besides being a member of MECHA and part of the Cross Cultural Center, I'm also on the RCC Funding Committee, which is through the Inter Club Council, and basically, I helped allocate funds through a lot of clubs. And I got to see firsthand just how many clubs, and how many events are being put out through the Student Activity Fee. And I know that a lot of people may have an issue because they don't, they're not aware that it's optional, but it is optional. And so people do have the option of, you know, being able to waive that fee. But I think that that fee definitely needs to be kept, because without that, again, programs through the Cross Cultural Center, through clubs, just would not be available. And student enrichment is really, really important. And I think especially in times of all these budget cuts, students really need something to look forward for. So, thank you.
Thank you. We also have a request from Vlad Wiskey.
Hello. It's me again. I come with the best intentions, and I will talk also about the Student Activity Fee, which is very, very important to us. And basically, what we're asking is taxes. We want to pay the money. And that's surprising, and the fact that only 65 students out of 30,000 actually wanted their money back. I think that's the biggest survey that can be done at this school. So I have a few events that, a list of a few events that happened here, and that were extremely important. For example, the Atheist Agnostic Club organized with the Comenoya Christian Club. They organized a debate in regards to different ideas and different issues in regards to Christianity, atheism, and so on. And the conference, Defend Ethnic Studies, was mentioned, as well as the MECHA Conference. The Tropa is the Filipino organization, which had a dance show, I think, two weeks ago. In regards to sustainability, we have an organic farm now. Also, there was an event where Daryl Hannah, the actress, participated in regards to sustainability. Model UN, I don't know, one of the students came and presented in front of the board the fact that the Model UN High School Conference, it happened last week. Lancer Games, Borders of Diversity, which is a very, very important conference, which brings many intellectuals, and it brings, I think the whole room, this whole room was full of students. The Forum on Words in Iraq and Afghanistan, Black Student Alliance organized the Poetry Slam. So it's a diverse range of cultural activities that bring different perspectives to the PCC students. And the AS, Jamie and Nolan and Simon and all the AS worked really hard to create specific rules on the way money are allocated and spent. So there shouldn't be a concern that these money are spent foolishly, because that is not the case, because there's strict, specific rules in regards to that. And I know most events might seem liberal or progressive, but, I mean, it's a college campus, and most students are progressive and liberal. And they change their, maybe they might change their orientation later on, but for now, I mean, that's it. And it is about the fact that it leads them later on to success in both the workplace and in their academic work. And issues like intersectionality are being brought up. And basically, what intersectionality says is that it defines humans as a sum of elements. For example, an African American is not only an African American, it's a human being that has multiple qualities, and we shouldn't reduce that person just to their race, their sexual orientation, their gender. We have to look at the whole picture, and that's extremely important. And clubs do help students grow and have the full college experience. So I know the issue will come back on the agenda in two weeks or so, but it's really important to hear our voices now, because next, in two weeks, we have finals. So I don't know how many of us will be here. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to address the board on non-agenda items? Okay, let's move on into the approval of the consent items. Are there any questions, any specific items to be discussed in particular? Mr. Baum?
122B.
Okay. Anything else to be pulled aside, dealt with separately?
124B.
And 122 and 124B. Anything else? Is there a motion to approve the other items?
Second?
Been moved by Dr. Fellow, seconded by Ms. Waugh. Student trustee, Pack?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. 122B?
Sure, I had a question about pay, it's the contracts, and it was the contract with AC Martin and Partners. It's on the page three of three, and it's for an increase of an agreement for design services for LEED certification, structural changes, landscape integration, and DSA requirements. And Dr. Van Pelt was kind enough to break it down for me for how that's broken up, but still, I wanted to raise the issue. We have constructed the building according to LEED gold standard, or the highest LEED standard possible, but in order to actually just get that LEED seal of approval, we're talking an extra, more than $100,000 of this contract. And in these fiscal times, I don't know that it is something that, I think while we know the building is LEED eligible, do we want to spend $100,000 just to get that LEED brand on it, too? And so I wanted to raise that issue and possibly reconsider that aspect of it.
Questions or any response from the staff?
Yeah. Well, I'm sorry, I defer to trustee man.
Well, I was going to say, I had also wanted to pull these, but that wasn't my question. I think that the, I don't know how much extra we spent to make the building LEED eligible, but it seems to me, but I'm sure it was substantial, that if we went to all that expense to not to get the certificate, it's like, you know, shooting ourselves in the foot. We've had testimony from student after student. We've had people from the city of Pasadena, all of whom are, you know, putting pressure on us to make our buildings LEED certified. So I would think that it would, since this is the final cost, that we should go ahead and...
Well, let me, if I can be helpful, let me put it in my layman's terms, and as my understanding, and then I'll throw the mic over to Vice President Van Pelt for specific details. As I understand it, you know, and it's quite, the question is quite a good one and quite pertinent. Whenever you move forward with a construction project, should it be a LEED certified project in the various levels? As I understood it, that that decision had been made in the design of the project, and that based on that decision, however one may view it, and I welcome moving forward, debate about LEEDs. But based on that decision, the plans were submitted to DSA, including that. If I understand correctly, if we were to change that at this time, or to reverse the previous decision, then we would probably have to resubmit some of these plans to DSA and risk somewhat of a delay. So that was a question that I asked. Having said that, I think the college is committed in its Ed Master Plan to sustainability, and we are a signatory to the Global Climate Initiative, for which we won an award this year. So I think on balance, I think it seems like the thing to do. But let me ask Rick to elaborate.
There are two parts of the cost. One is that in order to get a LEED certification, you actually have to prove that you qualified. So there's a lot of research and processing that goes into actually verifying in your application, because, you know, the certification comes from another source. The second part, however, is the commissioning part. And what the commissioning does is it fine-tunes all of the building systems to ensure that they are running at peak efficiency. And the reason why that's important, of course, is because if you're going to gain energy efficiency, you've got to make sure that there's the proper flow of air into the space, and the, you know, the exchange of air, and that the lights are working properly, that the building systems, cooling, heating, and so forth, are working efficiently. So there's a large component where, in order to become LEED certified, you have to become commissioned, and you have to hire a company, an independent firm, to verify that the systems are in fact running peak. So from that perspective, and this is Measure P money, it's not general fund money, but from that perspective, it will save us on the general fund side, because it saves us utility costs particularly. So there actually is a payback involved. No, I'm not arguing against the commissioning aspect, because I want the building to be as energy efficient as possible and to meet all our standards of efficiency. But my understanding also, we know a lot more about the LEED credential now than we did even when we started, and a lot of that is to just qualify for a certificate and doesn't necessarily enhance the energy efficiency, because you factored in all those energy efficiency standards into the design and the construction of the building. So it's really, from my perspective, paying an extra $100-plus thousand to get a certificate that we could say, okay, it's LEED. Well, and the other part of it is that we did promise donors, and because when they'd ask questions about whether it be LEED certified, or the Oversight Committee, various different members of the community, we have consistently said that we will be minimally LEED certified. We hope to be LEED silver, and to the extent that we can in fact become LEED gold, we'll do that as well. In order to become any one of those, it requires this process of research and verification. And ultimately, then, that's what qualifies you for either the certified silver or gold standards. And beyond what we paid AC Martin, what's the fee we pay to the LEED Business Council or whatever? Well, and that's included, and I have to do a little research. That's included in this $100-some thousand. Okay.
Other comments or questions or anything? Okay. I ask a question about 122B. I just want to make sure that this is, I'm understanding it accurately. Dr. Rocha, under pages three and, or two and three, excuse me, we have some restricted general fund items, where we are approving payment to some, certain of our employees for performing work for the Los Angeles slash Orange County Biotechnology Center. And do I understand accurately that the source of those funds is a grant that we have received?
Yes, and the short answer is yes, and I'll ask Dean Douglas to elaborate.
Yeah, this is part of our Biotech Center grant that we've been a part of for about 13 years. And Wendy Johnson is the director of it, and she's going to continue in that capacity even after retirement.
And the source of the money is a federal grant?
It's a state grant.
State grant, okay. Good, thank you. Do you want to go on to 124? Or you want to vote on 122B first?
We can vote on the other one.
Okay, let's...
And I just want to preface, my vote is not going to be, is not to compromise one degree on committing ourselves to the energy efficiency in our construction. It's just how we spend those resources.
Is there a motion to approve consent item 122B?
So moved.
Second? Been moved and seconded. Any student advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
One negative. Mr. Baum? Okay, 124B?
My question was on the last page about the change order to the Pasadena Municipal Services Department of increasing our PO from $2 million to $2.3 million, and it's, and so I wanted, my understanding, also given this institution's commitment to sustainability, we've taken extraordinary measures to invest in HVAC, and coolers, and chillers, to reduce our energy consumption. So why are we needing a mid-year increase? Are we, is the city raising its rates on us, or something like that?
No, this is actually just a change to the purchase order. When we wrote the purchase order, it was for significantly less than last year. But the reality is that we have added three buildings within the last 18 months, and therefore, you would expect that there'd be an increase in terms of utilities. But what we expect this year is for a utility bill on electricity to be very similar to last year. This is just a change to the purchase order to make certain that we have the ability to pay the bills when they come due.
Is your sense that we are using less energy as an institution than we were five years ago?
Yes.
Significantly.
Well, but it's always hard to tell, because when you add three new buildings...
I understand.
And I realize it's a difficult argument to make, but because you're dealing with hypotheticals. But we are using less, certainly within the areas of, for instance, chilling, it is significantly less. And, you know, the maintenance costs are less as well, so, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, is there a motion, any further discussion on 124B? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Been moved by Ms. Waugh, seconded by Dr. Fellow. Student advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're then back to our agenda. And I think it's probably appropriate to ask Mr. Pack if he'd come join us up here for a moment?
Yeah, we can do it here, or we probably need a photo. Rick, shall we have us here or there? Okay, we'll go to the podium.
Up there?
Yeah.
Except for when you're stopping.
They're stopping.
I'm not kidding.
We have been so very fortunate this year to have had the service of Nolan Pack as our student trustee. And I must say that the four years, or almost four years I've served on the Board of Trustees, each year we've had just an outstanding student trustee. Nolan has more than upheld that marvelous tradition. And so we just wanted to give this to you, and with our great thanks for all that you've done for Passing City College and for the Board of Trustees and students. We wish you well at UC Berkeley, or Northwestern, or that other, that Southern California school.
USC.
Whichever you select and end up... Whichever you select and end up there. But we hope you'll come back and keep in touch with us and we just want to say thank you so very much for all that you've done for us. Best of luck to you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much to everyone. I don't even know where to start. I guess, thank you first since we have a lot of students here, to the students who voted last year and elected me and my fellow AS members who are passing on the torch now. Thank you so much to all of the administrators, my colleagues on the board, Dr. Rocha, President Thompson. Everyone really has made this a fantastic learning experience for me. I think I've been really fortunate to sit through a very unique year at PCC. During my term alone, we have appointed a new trustee, a new president, and passed the EMP. And so that, I think, is a lot of really awesome stuff for one student trustee to be able to sit through. And I'm very glad that I got to participate in all of that. It's, it's been a fantastic experience all around, from the legislative summits that I've gotten to go to, to the League of Women Voters Conference that we were able to attend. And I cannot express enough that my time at PCC, especially this last year, has really been life-changing for me. So I'm really excited to be moving on to a new chapter in my life, but PCC will continue to be a very dear part of my life and I definitely will continue to support and hopefully continue to contribute to the organization, or the college as I move on. And I also want to just take a minute to recognize that you guys are very fortunate to be getting a new student trustee who is one of the most informed people I've ever met in terms of politics and world events and so forth. I think Alex is going to be a wonderful addition to the board and is going to continue in the tradition of excellence that PCC proudly upholds. And again, just thank you all so much for making this a really wonderful year for me and, yeah.
We would now ask Mr. Alexander Soto if he would join us up here, please. Now you may come up here, I think, with us.
We welcome you to the Board of Trustees as the student trustee. And I will now administer you the oath of office. So if you'll raise your hand, please, or repeat after me. I, Alexander Soto.
I, Alexander Soto.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties about, of which I'm about to enter.
Good. Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Yes.
May I make a comment on the quality of our student trustees?
Yes.
You know, I think Nolan, I agree with that, but I did want to share that I recently received a letter from Sean O'Connor, who was our student trustee, 2007 and '08, asking me to write a recommendation for him for medical school, which I have done. But in calculating it, I don't think he's 21 yet. So I, I don't know if that's a requirement or what people are going to think when they go see this doctor who's about 26. But anyway, that, I think that's a testimony to the quality of our student trustees and I know John Campos plans to go to medical school and I hope to be able to write a recommendation for him.
They have all been just fantastic and so we've been so very fortunate to have such an outstanding group of young people serving in that capacity. So thank you very much. And we don't want to say you're stepping into large shoes, but obviously you are.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity and I, I look forward to this, this upcoming year with you.
We have full confidence in you, so.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is a report from the Pasadena City College Foundation, a presentation. Dr. Sugimoto, are you introducing this?
Yes, I sure am. Thank you very much, Mr. Thompson. Board of Trustees and audience and guests, I'd like to first, before we get started with the report, to introduce two very important people to me and then three other very important people to me. I'd like to first introduce Mel Cohen, who is the president of our foundation, and I thank him tremendously for his leadership this past year. And Shirley Burt, who is one of our committed, dedicated and loving board members. And Shirley, would you please stand and be recognized? I also thank the three individuals who support the foundation on a daily basis, Anne Mae Jones, Irene Aguilara and Hasha Desai, if you would please stand up. And I thank all of you for being here. In your packet, I always call these peachies, I don't know why, but in your packet is the foundation annual report. And I would also like to thank, as I'm looking at him, President Thompson, who is our board liaison to our foundation. He has been committed to and dedicated to being the liaison and helping us keep in mind the reason why we are on the foundation board. So thank you very much, Mr. Thompson, for your time. In the foundation annual report, let me remind you that this is actually the 09-10 report. Our audit ended for the last year and I am very pleased that Heidi White is with us and I'm going to ask her in a few minutes to come forward so that she can answer any questions you might have about the audit. You might have been confused when you looked at the report saying 09-10 as opposed to 10-11, but you will have the opportunity to see a 10-11 report next year at this time since Heidi and her company will be launching into an audit rather shortly. So you will note that we put together a very brief annual report, bulleted, that gives you the highlights of the foundation for 09-10 and then also a little smattering of some of the highlights from 10-11, just as a reminder. I know Heidi is going to come up and say this, but I would like to say it in front of her, that the foundation audit for July 1st, 2009 to June 30th, 2010 came as an unqualified opinion from our auditors. And I know she will verify that when she comes forward. I think there's certainly highlights for the past two years in the foundation and those are listed here. I think some of the major ones, certainly this year, was the Westerbeck Family Trust, the $4 million that came through. I will also, and I was reminded that this, I should mention it today, that this morning I got a phone call from the attorneys who was, who were handling another trust and last week we received a $250,000 check from this trust. And I wanted to be sure that I read the documents correctly, that it was unrestricted. And the attorney confirmed that for me this morning, so we received another check that will go into our unrestricted account to support the foundation. I don't want to go on and on about the report. Certainly there are major highlights, the OSHA, we will meet our OSHA challenge, as I know Mr. Baum would be pleased to hear that, as well as the rest of the board. We are at 770,000, 3:30. I did receive a phone call this morning from a faculty member who is going to endow a scholarship in the name of their parents. We also are waiting for a June 14th meeting of the full board to look at the Westerbeck Family Trust to see if we can go ahead and submit a few more dollars to the OSHA and hopefully exceed the amount that our match would be. And I did confirm with the California Community College Foundation that if we do that before June 30th, we would then be able to have the 50, 50 cent match on every dollar. So we are working towards that. And now if I may, I, it is a pleasure to introduce Heidi White as the auditor for our foundation books and she is here to answer any questions you might have. You will find in the report a very shortened version of the audit and then after that, following that, the full audit that Heidi does with her group of auditors. So thank you very much, Heidi, for being with us today.
Welcome.
Thank you. It's, I was, I was telling Lisa as I came in, it was really nice to come in with sunshine rather than in the middle of December and January when it's so dark outside. It's nice to be here mid-year and be able to present the foundation report to you. As Lisa mentioned, the opinion on the financial statements is unqualified. These, the dollars that are represented through the foundation are included in Pasadena Community College District's annual audit, which you did receive back in January. So the numbers that are included here, you have seen. But I thought I'd like to point out a couple of things because the last couple of years have been very difficult for not-for-profit organizations. People are having less and less money to donate to the, the causes that are embraced by not-for-profits. But during 2010, approximately $1.5 million came in in donations, either specifically for scholarships, program services or unrestricted dollars. And I think that that's a tremendous benefit for the foundation to have received during this time. We had noticed during the prior two and three years, there had been some significant reductions in the investment earnings on the, the investments held by the foundation and there'd been some significant losses due to the market valuations. However, during 2010, those came back. And so the one thing you should look at with the unrestricted fund is that you are back in a positive position and moving forward. And I think with the monies that came forward today, that you'll see even more progress in that direction as well. As we look at all of your activities, we look specifically to make sure that the program services are really being addressed through the foundation, that you are spending your money for scholarships, for program services and that that's going forward very positively. During 2010, and I know that this is a year ago, so more is happening during the 2011 year, the total amount of scholarships and grants to the district was well over $600,000. And that goes directly to either your students or to the programs that they're being a part of. So a tremendous benefit for the district as well and for the students that are attending. There, as Lisa said, we are getting ready to start up our audit again. Will be out in August. And one of our goals this year is that we will present this report to you at the same time that we are presenting the district or Fairly Close, so that the information will be a little bit more fresh. But happy to answer any questions that you might have and find out, you know, if there's any questions now.
Are there questions? Mr. Martin?
Well, thank you for the report. I think I'm the one that a few years ago said it would be wise to time the audit foundation presentation with the accomplishments of the foundation so that it came in a consistent package. If we got this before, like you just said it was in the peachy, I missed it. So I really haven't had a whole lot of time to look at it. But in the three minutes you were presenting, I was curious as to the loss, the realized loss that occurred in the temporarily restricted fund and maybe get a little background as to why you would realize, usually that happens in foundation when you need money for a program that was given in prior year and now being executed in this year, not knowing that that's the case, I'm surmising. So I'm kind of interested in the background there and if there was an unrestricted cash that could have not covered that position to allow that loss maybe not to have occurred during what was a really difficult time financially. So is there anyone that has background into that 100, I think I saw $146,000?
About $143,000.
$143,000.
One of the things that the foundation has been very active in is redefining the investment policies and the portfolio. I think that what happened during 2010 was that there was a realignment of some of the investments that maybe had not bounced back through the downturn of the, the investment market and then coming back. And there were some opportunities to take those investments that maybe were still not coming back up with what the rest of the market was doing, sell them and then reinvest them in some other dollars that were actually going to return better. So it wasn't a cash flow issue for program services, it was really more of an investment decision.
Oh, okay. Well, that's good to hear. And I do see the, the reclassification entry you have for 220, this is all on page three for the rest of the board. $223,000 from, a little bit from unrestricted and a little bit of temporary to permanent? And I guess that happens as you delve into donor intentions or something? A little explanation on that?
Correct. Sometimes when donors give their funds, it's not clear right up front whether or not the funds are going to be held specifically for scholarships and only using the interest earnings or whether the principal can be used and it can be temporarily restricted. So as that is clarified, that movement goes back and forth and the reclassification will occur, but it is to adhere specifically to donor instructions.
And then finally, again, in the brief time I had it, it was encouraging to see that when you look on page five, I guess it's five and five, it's a two-page, five and five, where we're comparing 2010 to 29. And if you look in 2009, there's approximately $550,000 of what I would constitute as overhead administrative expense, both assuming operations is another term for administrative expense and fundraising, compared to a million one in program and a very, and a significant decline in operational expenses in 2010 to approximately what looks like $450,000 and an increase in program to a million two. So both, both numbers there are heading in what I would say are the right direction where we're delivering more money into program and less money necessary to operate that program, though obviously some money is required to operate that program. So those were the things that jumped out at me quickly. Appreciate those answers.
Mr. Baum, do you have a question?
I just want, and it's not related to Heidi, though. This is great to see the, a clean audit like this and to see the, the careful management of the resources. I want to just tip of the hat to Dr. Rocha, Vice President Sugimoto, Mel Cohen and the board because it's, it's not by accident that the philanthropic community in our area is, is turning more and more readily to the Pasadena City College for their, the direction of their philanthropic trusts. When you get the $250,000 bequest or, or trust distribution with unrestricted, that's, that's a unusual vote of confidence in this institution and in how we manage the resources. The $4 million Westerbeck gift, of course, as, as I said before, is drawing the attention of folks up and down the state. And I see that we are on the verge of a real opportunity and recognition and possibilities here for this institution to better serve the students. And for the students, I'm just so proud that we're going to make our OSHA grant and then some. And so, and I just want to explain to something, something that I hope the, the foundation board considers. If you, and for the students' sake, $100,000 endowment will generate roughly about $5,000 each year in scholarships because you, you are able to spend the money that it makes and while you keep that $100,000 pure, a whole, and you just spend the earnings. If we take advantage of the OSHA grant, if we put $100,000, we then, they automatically give us an extra $50,000 to apply to student scholarships. So instead of five $1,000 scholarships, we can do seven or eight $1,000 scholarships at money that comes at no cost to Pasadena City College. And we're going to be able to, with that OSHA funding, to serve twice as many, well, half as many students on top of what we had, so. And Elaine Chapman was the first, was, was the head of fundraising when, when this all started. So I hope, they've lifted, lifted the So, I hope, they've lifted, lifted the cap on how much we can qualify for under the OSHA challenge. So, every dollar that we spend, invest in the OSHA endowment beyond the cap will automatically have a 50% match. And I hope that we look carefully, because I don't know anywhere in any market where you're going to get from day one a 50% return on your investment. And, and I hope that we take advantage of that in a robust way.
Thank you.
But again, really amazing work done by this institution and the leadership, and our volunteer leadership that is, that has made this such an attractive place for donors to, to get involved with.
Mr. Martin?
I have one more detailed question, and this is on page 11, where it's talking about Level 1, 2, and 3 of foundation assets, and levels are basically a determine, you can probably describe it better than I can, but how readily there's a market price that is readily available and known securely. And Level 3 is one where perhaps it's a little harder to assess the actual values, because there's not a comparative market price. And so, I'm a little familiar with the California Community Foundation. I actually, for another reasons, audit a lot of their work myself for some other investments. And I'm, I'm kind of surprised to see that all of our money at California Community is classified Level 3, because I know they normally do deal in pools, of which a portion of those pools are Level 3, but yet a substantive portion of those pools are Level 1. So, is there something special that was donated to California Community that would be constituted of Level 3? Or is that just because part of those pools that, those mutual fund holdings of California Community are Level 3, that you put the entire amount there?
Because it is a pool, it is almost impossible to distinguish exactly what investments California Community Foundation is holding specifically for Pasadena City College Foundation. And so, we confirm with them that yes, they have your investment, yes, they have those dollars there, but they cannot confirm to us exactly which investments are there. And they've actually instructed us to show them as a Level 3 market, that, that it's not something that you can go out and say, okay, we've got this much money here, and we could trade it somewhere else openly for the same price.
So, we're in the traditional California Community, one of their traditional pools.
Correct.
It's just you've declared that that whole pool is Level 3.
They have represented that back to us, yes. That, that was a decision that they made, because they can't, they can't segregate out and say exactly which pool your dollars are associated with.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
Other questions? Dr. Mann?
Yes, I have a comment, and Mr. Baum, maybe can help me with this. It's my understanding from a letter we received, I think from the California Community Foundation, that there's only one district that has met its OSHA goal?
No, there's about a dozen.
A dozen? Okay. So, then we still, when you look at how many they are, we are doing very, very well to, to meet it. Plus, being a big college, we have a very high goal as opposed to some of the smaller ones. And there were some districts who have raised no money at all for it. So, I, I think that shows that we really are a leader in the state.
Yeah, it's, as the board's liaison to the PCC Foundation, which has been a real privilege for me to serve in that capacity, I can say that we are very privileged to have had the leadership of Dr. Sugimoto, Ms. Chapman, Irene Aguilar, Anna Mae Jones, and of course, Mel Cohen, and Shirley Burt, and Bobby Moon, and all the members of the foundation Board of Directors. They've done just a marvelous job, and it's a real pleasure to represent this group on that board and to go to their meetings and to share and learn all this happening. So, thank you so very much for not only a great report this evening, but for all that you're doing for PCC. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Thompson, Board of Trustees.
President Thompson, I did want to just very quickly add my deeply felt note of appreciation to Lisa for her leadership of the foundation. It's been a historic year. I think, I appreciate the foundation supporting my judgment that we needed somebody of Lisa's stature as Vice President in, in the foundation this year. And my judgment was unassailable, and, and her results are absolutely unassailable. I'm so deeply grateful. And in addition to the work that Lisa's done, she's become a good friend and a confidant and an advisor throughout this year. So, she has helped contribute to all the successes that we've had this year, and I just want to say thanks to Lisa.
Thank you. Excellent. Well-deserved comments. The next agenda item is ratification of tentative agreement with ISSU, discussion with possible action. Dr. Rocha?
President Thompson, the board has been briefed and presented with the tentative agreement. We've been informed by Anna Mae Jones, the head of issue, that they have ratified it. And so, now for final action, I bring the tentative agreement before you for the board's ratification. So, that is the proposed action.
Are there any questions? If not, is there a motion to ratify it?
Second.
Been moved by Ms. Waugh, seconded by Dr. Fallow. Any discussion to take place? Any questions? Student trustee?
Aye.
Reverse vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
If I may, President Thompson, could I call forward Anna Mae Jones, because I just wanted to thank her publicly for her leadership this year. We had a good, fair negotiation that came to a, I think, a win-win result. So, I thank you, Anna Mae.
Thank you, Dr. Rocha, President Thompson, members of the board. I want to publicly thank my negotiating team, Cheryl Storms and Julio Huerta, as well as the negotiating team that represented the district, Bruce Barsuk and Dean Engeldiger. This college has a long history of recognizing and acknowledging the contributions of classified staff. We are certain that that will continue under Dr. Rocha's leadership. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Anna Mae. Okay, the next agenda item is public hearing and adoption of fiscal year 2011, 2012 tentative budget, discussion with possible action. Dr. Rocha?
Yes, President Thompson, this is a usual action at this time of year. First, though, I would ask the President of the Board to declare open a public hearing.
Okay, the public hearing is not open. Is there anyone who, do we want a presentation first with this, or?
Well, Vice President Van Pelt will make a brief presentation on what's being forwarded.
We'll invite public comment after the presentation.
Okay, this is a pro forma budget. It's a tentative budget, and essentially, what it does is it gives us legal authority to spend money after July the 1st and prior to the adoption of the actual budget. So, the mechanics of what takes place is that we take this year's current budget, and we roll over all the numbers for next year in order to give us spending authority. So, needless to say, that the final budget, the adopted budget, will look nothing like this. This is just purely pro forma. So, this is a mechanism that we've used for a very, very long time. It is expected this year that we may actually have a budget on time, because Proposition 25 only required a majority vote, and it also penalized lawmakers with a permanent reduction in their pay for each day that the budget was not presented. We were also informed today that the final budget, the current projections are between a $6 million and a $10 million cut over this year. So, we're working on that with the Budget Resource Allocation Committee, and the Budget Resource Allocation Committee was informed last time that we would be presenting this document to the board today.
Are there questions of Dr. Van Pelt? Anyone wish to address the board with respect to the tentative budget that we have before us? If not, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Is there a motion to adopt the 2011, 2012 tentative budget?
So, moved.
Second.
Been moved by Dr. Fallow, seconded by Ms. Waugh. Any discussion, questions? Okay, student trustee?
Aye.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda for this evening is a report on board meeting videotaping pilot program, a presentation. Juan Gutierrez, welcome.
Yes, President Thompson, in introducing Juan Gutierrez, Juan, this is not an action item, this is an informative. I asked Juan to prepare, as we were required to do, a report, a descriptive report of the results of the first year of the pilot to videotape the board meetings, and you can see the videotaping occurring as we speak. And so, the, Juan will present the report briefly, and obviously, and of course, take your questions and comments, and that'll be the sum and substance of the, of the item.
Well, there may well be a need for more information, and I think the expected procedure would be to have this on our next meeting agenda or the one thereafter for possible action, if the board wishes to take any action on it. Juan Gutierrez?
Thank you, President Thompson. Thank you, Dr. Rocha. You have this presentation in your packet as well, if you'd like to come along. Last year, as you remember, the board approved a pilot program to televise the, and the taping of the board trustees' meetings. I'm going to give you a informative, brief presentation on some of the things we found, what you approved, and also bring back some of the options that Dean Miller was so kind to present to you a year ago. Well, we're going to talk about the pilot year to begin with. Using the Pasadena Community Access Corporation to film the trustee meetings, we, we employed them to provide a DVD and also host the meetings on their server, which became available on our website at pasadena.edu. Later in the year, we also added, or you voted to, add captioning and also transcription to the meetings for this past year, as well as the transcription for the last two years. And I do want to point out, there is a change on the second part of the slide, where it says, on, on your handout, it says 14, it should be 15, because the June 15th meeting will more than likely be televised. And the cost, and this is not to exceed $31,025. Originally, when the contract with PCAC was approved by the board, there was two meetings per month that would be here in Creveling. But as you went out into the community, it became one meeting. So, that is why the cost of which you approved and what is here on the slide is significantly less. I'd like to go to the next slide and talk about some of our viewership online. Using Google Analytics, we determined that through July of 2010 to May of 2011, we've had total views of the board meetings of 1,575. Now, we can't say these are unique views or unique viewers, but it has been accessed that, that amount. I also want to point out that at the bottom, it says the statistics do not include the cable viewers. The way that it gets on cable, aside from PCTV, is that a DVD is sent out to all the municipalities within our district, and they run the cable, the board of trustees' meetings until the next meeting, and they supplant that into their schedule. So, there are some people viewing it through cable as well. We just, there's no Nielsen ratings for that, so it's not something you can track very I'd like to talk about Option 1, as I like to call it, a continuation of what happened on the pilot year. And I want to thank Elaine Chapman for taking the lead in getting these numbers from PCAC. I, as some of you, some of you know, sit as a director of PCAC, and for me to be an employee of PCC and sit as a director of PCAC to negotiate this would be a bit of a conflict of interest. So, Elaine Chapman was kind enough to step in and actually work with the interim director to get these, these numbers. As you can see, the proposal from PCAC is actually $80 more per meeting, and that's to cover some of their costs. So, after a year, PCAC has determined that it takes a little bit more funding in order for them to at least break even with, with the contract they have with us. The second portion is the captioning, which would continue on if it is approved by the board from July to June again of the next fiscal year. And as you can see, the total for the transcription and captioning comes out to $11,044, for a total, including PCAC camera work and DVDs that they provide, of just over, under $21,000. Option 2 is a option that includes Granicus, and I want to thank Bob Miller at this time and his team for providing basically the groundwork for putting everything together. It took a lot of work to come up with these numbers and some of the things that Granicus does provide. And I want to thank Bob for providing his figures to me, and we just updated them to present this to you tonight. And basically, what Granicus does, if anyone is familiar with what the city of Pasadena and other municipalities do, they use a media manager called Granicus. And basically, what that does, it'll, it'll, it gives more features to the online streaming of the actual meetings. It actually establishes a repository for basically everything that we do, all the meetings. It is keyword searchable, provides live web streaming, if we want to go that route, it's an option. We can chapter meetings, so people viewing the meeting or accessing it can actually go to a particular agenda item, which is something that currently we cannot do. And we can actually upload documents as well. So, as people are viewing the trustee meeting, they can actually have the agenda on the same screen and other documents we choose to upload. The Granicus cost would be $13,137, which is a one-time cost for the software of over $6,500, and then a monthly cost at $550 a month. That's actually half off, because Granicus is offering us a 50% off discount if we go in this direction. Usually, that's over $1,000. Additional equipment, if we want to go with live streaming, is $3,300, and that covers a server and a video capture card. Additional staffing, we budgeted $2,000. As a former accountant, I'd like to give you the, what I like to call the worst-case scenario, the most it would cost. So, we have some soft costs in there as well. We would continue the staffing from PCAC, we would use their cameras. And then the live captioning and transcription is $14,388. And the reason it went up from Option 1 is because live captioning, if we do live stream, is a bit more. So, the total cost would be a little over $42,000. One-time cost, a little under $10,000, and an annual cost of 32 for this option. And finally, the third option, which is something else that Bob Miller discussed with you last year, is to actually turn Creveling here into something more like the city council chambers for Pasadena with fixed cameras. So, I thought I'd bring this back to you, just so you could compare what that would entail. We do have some one-time fixed cost of equipment for cameras, the server, video, and facilities modification. Granicus would also be included for that, and that again is a carryover from Option 2, so it's the same cost. Staffing is the same, and so is live captioning. The total annual cost would actually decrease from Option 2, but the upfront one-time would be for equipment and one-time costs and cameras, which would be a little under $66,000. And then finally, just for comparison, I have all three options on the next slide that you have in front of you and the one we have here. Basically, what this would do is Option 1, a continuation of what we did this pilot year. Option 2 is to add the Granicus component, and Option 3 is to become a fixed camera-type studio here in Creveling Lounge. And that completes my report.
Are there questions of Juan? Mr. Baum?
First off, thank you for the report. This is really helpful. We, we decided to do this a year ago. We, we wanted to go the most conservative route and to just be able to document, and that's always been my philosophy, that it's, it's just important to have these proceedings available for viewers to be able to watch online or on cable. And I've been very pleased with the PCAC crew and the, the production capabilities that I've seen and the professionalism with which the, the meetings have been recorded. And so, I wanted to, to say thanks to them. And, and I actually have gotten a number of comments from cable viewers who are channel surfing and see PCTV and, and happen to catch the meeting, surprised, because I expected to hear from nobody. And, and-- And even as in my days at C-SPAN, we were never sure if anybody was watching, but we just, but it was always nice to find out when somebody did actually see something or ask you a question about something they saw on television. So from where I sit, it's been a successful experiment that I hope we continue, being mindful that we should always take the most conservative approach. I do like the Granicus system, because that's what the city council uses, it's most user-friendly, as far as enabling viewers to actually look for a specific item, or if a parent wants to see the presentation that we heard from upward bound where their child was acknowledged and celebrated, they don't have to watch two hours of video to get that five minutes of content that they want to be able to share. So I really appreciate the work you've done, and what Bob Miller did to get this off the ground, and I appreciate this data and options going forward.
Are there questions, or Dr. Mann?
Well, I, unlike Mr. Baum, I've never had anyone say that they've seen us on cable. And as you know, I've finally figured out how to actually get it. You just have to sit there, at least me, and wait for about five minutes, and then an announcement comes up that says PCC is, you know, doing this. I've never seen anything live, so I guess I'm not looking at the right time. I'm concerned with this, that there's only 1,575 people who've watched the board streaming, as Mr. Martin just whispered to me, probably a third of those was me. Because I've had to miss some meetings, and I do go watch the, I do watch the meetings that I don't participate in. And so I, after having watched many of the meetings, I think if we continue this, we should go with Granicus, so that people can find it. Because, you know, often you do have to watch two hours to get five minutes. And a couple of times, when I wasn't sure about what had happened at a meeting when I was present, I thought, no way am I going to, I knew that happened at about 10 o'clock, no way am I going to start in from 7:00 and watch this. So I still do not think that this is worth the expenditure. However, if the rest of the board believes that it should, I would be in favor of using Granicus, so that it's user-friendly.
Dr. Fallow?
Yes, thank you. I agree with Dr. Mann, and I'm going to have to ponder this, whether, that is not a great viewership, 1,500. I'm just wondering, and I'm trying to get up to speed on technology, if these were just shown on the PCC webpage, is that possible?
Actually, it's hosted by PCAC and accessed through the PCC webpage.
It is on the PCC webpage.
I never wa, I've been in politics 21 years, I've never watched a city council meeting or a water board meeting. Okay, I'm going to have to study this. I don't know if it's worth the money, to be honest. I think democracy is very expensive, but I don't know.
Mr. Baum?
The only thing I would raise, then, is the principle of having it available, or is it the, because if our goal is to get the most viewers, then I would then charge the administration with coming up with a plan to actually, which I'm not sure is worth the administration's time, to actually aggressively promote it, so that we can generate more access. Right now, it lives primarily on, you have to drill down about three pages on the PCC website to find our agenda and our minutes, and then you see the video link. And so you have to be pretty motivated to do that, and I use the metaphor of a book in the library. Does the value of that book in the library rest on how many times it's checked out, or is it that that book is available for the person who needs to check it out when they need it? And I feel, as a public body with a $120 million budget of taxpayer funding, we need to be as transparent and as accessible as possible, no matter how many people need to access it. And that's where I fall down on philosophically, on that.
Ms. Brown?
Yeah, I have to agree with Jeff to a certain extent, because last year, when we were, this was presented to us, one of the reasons was transparency, and that was the reason why we did the pilot. It's not that we thought it was cost-effective, or we had an option, really. So I would probably agree with Jeanette, too, if we continue it, which I think we really don't have a lot of choices, is to do it right. That's what I would suggest.
Ms. Wa.
Juan, do we know how many hits we're getting on just accessing the documents, so not the video? I mean, are people interested at all in just the transcript?
What I can do is I can get that information to you through Google Analytics, I don't have that information with me right now.
Yeah, because I'm just wondering whether or not it just seems easier, because then it becomes at least searchable. I mean, I've gone through, and I've watched the video, and I have to say, it's quite difficult to actually sit through all of it, and then it doesn't really stream over, so.
I'll refrain from asking why you find it difficult to sit through watching.
You obviously have never watched. You wouldn't be asking that question.
That's right.
Other comments, or, I'm sorry, Ms. Burton?
Well, first, I want to point out that we have a very low-cost, highly efficient audio cast, that I think does a tremendous job at almost no expense in recording this entire meeting to make sure if there's any question as to what was said, or intent, or even picking up tone, that's available. I view our primary mission here is one of education, and when we're starting to go into what the amount of money that could constitute a full another section of English 1A, or two sections of English 1A, I kind of have to revert back to my original opinion, is if we're going to spend that kind of money to broadcast anything, let's broadcast English 1A, because we know there's oodles of people out there. I guarantee you, we'll get more than 1,575 hits if we go and broadcast English 1A, or Math 1, where people can zoom in on the board and slow down the teacher. Look at the YouTube hits on educational instruction that are happening over and over and again, and I don't believe it's any less transparent when we have an audio cast that gives us the full recording, the full context of everything that was said. We have open meetings, we move public participation on non-agenda items to the beginning of the meeting. I think the administration in the last few years, and especially under Dr. Rocha, has moved very aggressively into be very transparent, and getting out in the campus and outside of the campus with everything that's going on, I want to use our resources for instruction. So if we're going to broadcast anything, let's figure out how to broadcast classes, and keep this to an audio cast, low-cost, almost no-cost audio cast for posterity. It's no less transparent, in my opinion, to be able to handle it that way, and way more instructional and mission-based.
So my question would be, are you suggesting we take up as an agenda item the broadcasting of content? We have a whole television channel devoted to Pasadena City College, and should we have a discussion about programming that channel, and then go into all the other online and distant, you know, broadcasting tools we use?
I would love that agenda topic, I think it's totally mutually exclusive from this, other than they both require resources, and obviously, we've made an effort in online education, we've committed resources to it. I'd be willing to commit more, I'd be willing to work with the college on how we could broadcast academic classes, so students that miss classes or need to repeat on a section can go back. We know, from listening at our trustee conference, we listened to the gentleman from the Gates Foundation, and we know how YouTube is being used by both academic institutions formally and students informally, to help students both on the original presentations and supplemental presentations. Let's take this money, and let's get it into the students' hands. They're waiting outside of doors, trying to get into classes, and we're going to spend money broadcasting us? It doesn't make sense to me. It doesn't make sense. I think we put it.
Well, you just, you said this is separate, and then you just said it's together, it's separate.
It's together with finance. If we can use this money, and to answer your question, yes. Anytime you want to talk about more classes, more distant education, if broadcasting classes and using this money to accomplish that goal, absolutely, that's an agenda item I would love to hear. So I just don't see the actual filming cost of this adding anything that good education wouldn't be a better use of the same, of the same resources, especially, and I'm sorry to say for the third time, because we have a very low-cost audio cast that you can fast-forward and zip-through, and you can go to different items right on there, you just click on it, if you want this agenda topic or that agenda topic, it's easy to get the whole history of this entire meeting on the audio cast like that, rather than spending more money, so that it's hard to see who somebody looks like, and now we want to make them look, that's just not where I want it.
Some would argue that video is actually a more powerful tool for understanding what transpired than audio. I mean, it's a difference of opinion.
I think being here is the best way, and I think we try to have a very open meeting, we moved them out into the communities. You know, you and I have a different opinion.
Okay, let's, one at a time, please.
You had your side, I said my side, you can have the last word, I don't care, but my word is, let's take money and put it into how we can help get more classes.
Before you do, let Ms. Wa have a say out of here.
Okay, well, I guess I'll tie-break this, but I do want to say that I do agree with trustee Martin. You know, I think transparency comes more from just the audio casts or being able to see something on video, and obviously, you know, from the number of low hits that we're getting on the audiovisual, we're not really, people aren't interested in that kind of transparency, and that was one of the reasons if, I was wondering whether or not people were actually even accessing the documents. But I do agree that I would, you know, regarding technology, I would really like to see us put the money into offering the technology that really delivers services and education to the students, rather than showing us having the meeting, because I think, I'm not sure that that really delivers the transparency that we're hoping for.
The one thing I would just say, that leads, which is, and Mr. Martin has been wonderfully consistent on this, and we all, we could, we should, we could put every expenditure through that test, and it would, I would argue that it costs as much for us to have meetings in, at the San Marino Library, in added expenditures, that it, as it does to have the cameras at that same meeting. So if we want to talk about every expenditure that this board undertakes to actually inform the public, we can weigh that, and we should argue that, is that taking money away from instruction? And if it is, we should then make that decision. Are we going to spend it on this, or are we going to spend it on instruction? Are we going to spend it on that? Are we going to spend it on coffee and beverage service at board meetings? Are we going to save, you know, $1,500 during the course of the year, not to do that, so that we can actually contribute towards instruction? I mean, we can go down that path, if that's what we want to do.
Dr. Mann?
Yes, I just want to go back to this number, this 1,575, and Mr. Martin referred to what we heard at the conference for the gentleman from the Gates Foundation. I think this was where it was, it may have been at another conference. There's a professor at Berkeley, well-known physicist, who's put like Physics 1 on YouTube, and he's got 486,000 hits. We got 1,575.
We have done very little to promote that accessibility.
I think he did very little to promote his physics class.
Well, okay, let's, let me pretend I serve some function here, my.
Thank you, if I may. I think if this board wants to continue transparency, I would agree with Mr. Martin's comments in saying that, I think in audio, and I'll say this as someone who has gone on and looked at the webcast, and been part of that 1,575 number on that presentation, having that audio cast, I think, serves the same function in transparency, in people knowing what transpired in this meeting, in conjunction with having the documents up, that the videos serve as well. If you want to have the videos, that's a discussion to have, but it may be more cost-effective to look into audio, just audio translation and documents on there, and be just as transparent. And I think this board has gone in the way of transparency with going out and reaching out to the community. I think continuing things like that will help as well.
Well, let me offer my thoughts on this, and as I said, we'll come back in two weeks or four weeks and have further discussion about it, but I think there's a distinction that can logically and easily be drawn between video presentations for online instruction and broadcasting meetings of this nature. City council meetings are broadcast, I don't know how many people watch those, I don't think it's a huge audience, like Tony. I never watched them while I was on the city council, I certainly have not watched them since I was no longer on the city council, but there are people who do, and people who I think stumble upon or don't know that we exist on video and watch us when it happens. But I think that there is really an important mission, and I know I'm kind of going back to my Pied Piper's approach here, but I really do believe that education is the issue of our days, and the more we can do to let the public know what the challenges are with education, and what the needs are, then the better off we're all going to be. I think one way of doing that, albeit not all that successful, is to televise our meetings. Maybe we need to talk with PCAC and do a better job of scheduling things, or maybe we need to talk with the city and see what they can do to be helpful to us. But certainly, $17,715 per year is peanuts. We're spending more time and more money than that, probably, just this time we're talking about this, so that's not really the issue, and I don't, again, I've not researched this scientifically, but I would bet that more people would watch things on television than listen to an audio. I mean, how many people sit at home listening to the radio, or the internet? I mean, it happens, yes, but I think televising the meetings is a much more effective way of communicating to the public what it is that we're doing, and what our needs and our challenges are. So we can have further debate, I guess, in a couple of weeks or four weeks' time, depending on the content and length of our upcoming agendas, but it's a good topic. I think anybody who would like to maybe form an adult ad hoc committee and sit down and talk further about this, and explore ways to effectively reach the public, whether it be television or whatever else, you know, just shoot an email or volunteer, and we'll be glad to follow up with it. But I think that it's something that we're looking at that's really important, and I know we all agree with that. Yes, Dr. Mann?
I just want to point out, I think the most effective way we have of reaching the public is through KPCC, which has, what, 700,000 listeners or so forth, and we're there every hour on the top of the hour. And people do tell me, you know, I heard that, and then we have information on there, like, you know, PCC top transfer for such and such. I've actually been at events, and people come up to me and say, "Did you know PCC was this?" And I said, "Really? That's really interesting." And they got it off that. So, I mean, and that, in a sense, doesn't cost, except it's part of our contract with Southern California Radio. So again, I just can't get over this 1,575, as compared to hundreds of thousands of people in the area who hear KPCC.
Any further discussion this evening on this, or?
I was just going to ask Juan, if, Juan, could you clarify for the board what the timeline for the decision is?
The current contract with PCAC ends June 30th of this year. So after the 30th, the new fiscal year.
So I would ask the board to take it under advisement, and as to how will, the board will choose to discuss this and bring back a final recommendation. And last thing, just following up on a comment, that if our friends from PCAC could step away from the camera, and raise your hand and give us your name, so that we can thank you for this year of service. So, who's standing there? Kevin Bruce, and you guys back there?
That's our guys back there.
Okay, those guys, well, what's your name, man? You guys are working so hard, every time we have these board meetings, good for you, man.
We have to suffer through it.
All right, let's give these guys a big round.
The guy's outside in the truck right now.
That's right.
Who's in the truck?
Okay, well, thanks very much, then, we'll take this up, try to get on the next meeting, which is on the 15th of this month. The next on the agenda is Item L, two policy recommendations. Dr. Mann, do you want to speak to these, please?
These have both been, as the cover memo says, they have been compared to model policies provided by the California Community College League, and reviewed by the college's executive committee and the college council. The first one of these, which is on the addition of the associate degrees and arts for transfer, and this goes. for Transfer and the Associate Degrees in Science for Transfer, comes out of the legislation that was carried last year, which establishes these degrees. And I'm, and if you remember, last time we approved, I think it was 12 or 14 majors or to go with that, but it doesn't do very much good to have the major without having the, the degree. So, this is like the, the second step. That is the, the new, the new policy, and actually, on 4060, what we're doing is just adding the Associate Degree, adding those two degrees. I would also remind the board that we only approve the policy, we do not approve the procedures, but if you look at the procedures, the changes in the procedures are also very, very minor, just adding the, the Associate Arts in Transfer. And so, what I would, and then the second one, if you want to do the two together, this is a, a new policy, it gives a, you know, a philosophy of the, why we have an Associate Degree. I think it's also a part of the whole transfer mode to make sure that our Associate Degree is acceptable and compatible with the four-year colleges, what they do in their first two years. And again, we only are approving the policy, and I would like to recommend that we approve both of these policies.
Is that a motion?
Yes, it is.
There a second?
Second.
Been moved by Dr. Mann, seconded by Ms. Wa, that we approve both Policy 4060 and-
4062.
4062. Any questions, Dr., Ms. Martin?
Yeah, I, I kind of tried to forewarn Dr. Rocha of this. So, I got a little confused in reading this, and so maybe it's just really clear and I missed it, so I'd like to hear it instead of read it. I was trying to understand the difference between, I'm going to just blatter all the questions out, Ed, I think, knows what's coming, what the difference between an Associate Degree for Transfer and an Associate Degree R, and I realize science for science, so I get the difference between science and arts. And then, following that, the, the role or the requirement, is there a requirement for PE in, in both either and/or of those? And finally, I know there's, it used to be in the requirements, at least for UC when I was here, and again, you're counseling, so you know this, that, that some of the institutions, I'm not sure about the Cal States, didn't require PE, but we required PE, and I thought at one time we were trying to angle a certain degree where you received a degree that had the academic component without the physical education component. And so, again, is that part of this? Is there such a program like this? So, if you can kind of just clear me up on all of that.
Okay, I'll try to answer those, those questions. And actually, if you were to look at, at the procedure section of 4060, which is on the second page, the first part describes what a student would need to complete an, either an AA or an AS degree here at Pasadena City College. So, this is what we refer to as the traditional degree, and it does indeed have a PE component. But if you look at the very next page at the top, again, those are our local GE requirements, page three at the top, students can opt to graduate making use of IGETSI or the CSU General Education Pattern, and for those options, students do not have to complete a PE requirement. Okay? So, it, students have options, the local requirements, or you might say the transfer requirements.
And, and the one on the top of page three, is that the, is that the Associate Degree for Transfer?
Actually, that is the, sort of a traditional Associate's Degree.
Within the traditional, there's options.
Yes, even within the tradition, there is, there's option. The new part is actually Section 3 immediately below that, it's sort of in, in bold print, and that incorporates the changes brought about by Senate Bill 1440. And for those, for that option, students must make use of IGETSI or the CSU GE pattern, and once again, those patterns do not have physical education as a component.
So, that's kind, okay, so I understand, except for, I was kind of doing this, trying to figure out what the difference is between the transfer, not transfer, and about the fifth flip, I got dizzy and gave up.
Right.
What's the difference?
The, the first one, well, the second one, again, Section 3 on, that we just referred to, is the one that is tied to Senate Bill 1440. It will be tied then to guaranteed acceptance by the CSU system. It may be that with time, this new section may just ultimately replace that entire first section that we were referring to, so that we can clarify the options that students have as they transfer. For now, we have chosen to retain both options, to give students clear catalog rights as they sort of go through the system. We don't want to take any graduation opportunities away from students, but it's really that new Section 3 that is going to be what we take forward into the future, you might say.
So, both sections are 60 units, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Both sections are class courses number 1 to 99.
That's correct.
I know there's a lot more letters on the first section talking about English 1A competency and different things, but is there any other, without me trying, I just couldn't figure out what else is different?
Well, Section 3, again, is, is relatively short compared to that first section. You're right, it doesn't go into as much detail, because the requirements under IGETSI and the CSU General Education Pattern are actually, those really come to us through transfer guidelines, and so we'll, we'll simply make use of those transfer guidelines for awarding our degrees based on IGETSI or CSU GE pattern.
Could I add something, and if I'm not correct, you can correct me. It's my understanding that the, one of the real strengths of the transfer degree for the students is that the two-year colleges cannot add extra courses. I mean, you have this, these 60 units and whatever, nor can the four-year colleges. So, when a student transfers in the transfer degree with 60 units, then when they get to the four-year colleges, and, you know, I was at Cal State Northridge for years, Cal State Northridge can't say, "Well, you've got to take 15 more units." They only have to take the next 60 units as agreed in this transfer degree. So, this is a tremendous-
That is correct, Dr. Mann.
-improvement for, for the students who are here and they really want to transfer. It will enable students to move through much quicker, and, and of course, they always have the options of, of doing, of doing these other things. And the, and the, kind of the details of some of this is still work, being worked out by that Senate committee, is it not?
Yes, we're, we're still waiting to get some clarification from the CSU system.
Any other questions?
Both, both policies have been completely thoroughly reviewed by the, the CNI Committee, Curriculum and Instruction Committee, and by the Academic Senate.
Other questions or comments? Student trustee?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, we're now to item M, AB 684. Dr. Mann, discussion of possible action.
I passed out to all the board members an update on AB 684. A few of you have something on the back, but then I realize you really don't need it, because it just had some contact information. But AB 684 is a bill that was, that the Community College League asked Assemblymember Marty Block, who's from San Diego, who's a former Community College trustee to carry, and what it addresses is the California Voting Rights Act requires that if you have at-large elections, and there's a possibility that having the elections at large would disenfranchise a, a, a recognized community, that you then must have what they call wards, which is what we call districts. The, the document that I handed out said this issue recently cost Modesto City Council $3 million in legal fees, and then they had to switch to this. The, the word that's coming out, you know, from the league and from everyone else that I have heard is, if you have at-large elections, you really, really ought to consider changing and, and districting, making districts. But the problem here is that in order to do that, there is an earlier law that community colleges, the only way they can make the change is there has to be an election, a vote. You have to give the voters the option of deciding this. However, these, K-12 do not have to do that. So, what this bill would do would, would, would be that if a community college district decided it wanted to establish, again, what they call wards, which would thus be districts, they can do so by having a resolution and going to the Board of Governors, and if the Board of Governors approved it, they then would not have to have an election. Now, this does not affect us, because we do have wards, but most of the districts in the state do not. And if you will remember, when we were going through the process of selecting our, our distinguished trustee from South Pasadena, San Marino, the part of the discussion was how much would it cost to have an election for just that one district, and it was, what, Dr. Mann told, like $200,000?
No, like $300,000.
Or $300, $300,000.
Yeah, Linda was expensive.
Yeah, she was. And, and so, if you, if you look at the, there's 73 districts in the state, and you look at the amount of money it would cost to implement this compared to having a process where the board could simply get approval from the Board of Governors, I think that we should support this and go on record as supporting it. Now, this bill actually is out of the Senate and is now, I mean, out of the Assembly and is now in the Senate, but obviously, the more colleges who support the bill, the better the chance it has of passing. But again, in the financial crisis, I don't think very many districts want to spend, you know, with us, it would be, what, three times 21, it would be over $2 million if we would have to, have to do that. So, I will be happy to answer questions, but I'm moving that we support AB 684.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Many discussion, questions, comments? Ready for a vote? Student trustee?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. As we move to future business board meeting dates, I wanted to make one comment in a sense of an announcement. Passing this community, city, passing Area Community College District bylaw 1680 deals with evaluation of the performance of the superintendent president, and it provides that when the fall semester begins, in odd-numbered year, the evaluation will be conducted with input from the board alone. When the fall semester begins in even-numbered year, the evaluation will be conducted by the board with input from the faculty, staff, as students, as described in, in paragraph four below in the bylaw. Because of the fact that Dr. Rocha has been with the college less than a year, and under the timeline provided, would have been here roughly only eight months when the evaluation began, the Board of Trustees has made some adaptations in this for this year, and is not going, even though the fall semester began in 2010, an even-numbered year, we're going to pursue the alternative to this, the odd-numbered year, where the evaluation will be conducted with input from the board alone. And so, I just wanted to make that announcement, and to be clear about that, we are in the process of doing this, and it's underway. But we will be following procedure, not what the bylaw requires, but given the special circumstances, we're going to deviate from that and make some adaptations to our bylaw for this purpose. Dr. Martin?
And I, I'd comment, there's some other adaptations that need to be made just because of the schedule and the timing and-
Right.
When, when things happen when would have meant, you know, his first day on the job, and then his second day on the job, we start evaluating or something crazy. So, it's not just that one adaptation, but there's actually several that are involved, including how we handle the schedule, but we certainly plan on doing some form of evaluation.
We will do a thorough evaluation, yes. Okay, we are in, on to future board meeting dates, Wednesday, June 15th. This is going to be a regular business meeting, not a study session, as the contrary to the practice we've been following. Open session will start at 6:30, closed session at 5:00. On the Wednesday, July the 6th, even though on our calendar, that's said to be dark, we feel that we need to have a meeting, and so we're going to have, again, a regular meeting starting at 6:30, closed session at 5:00, and again, then on July the 20th, the same thing, so. Mr. Baum?
Just, I'm on the California Post-Secondary Education Commission, which has a meeting on this 15th, so I may not be here until about 7:00.
Okay.
And then I will, will be out of town on the 6th of July, so I will not be able to, so I, if we can reschedule that, I would request that.
I hate to tell you, Mr. President, but I have to go to Italy and teach the month of July.
Again?
Another tie.
Last year, he did this, and I, I told him, I said, "I think you really ought to take your lawyer with you," but the guy declined.
I'm taking the vice president of the university this year.
What is your schedule on, are you going the entire week of the 6th, Jeff?
Yeah, the entire week of the 6th.
Okay, well, we can, we'll see if we can work around that somehow, but as of right now, we're, we're planning a meeting on the 6th, so.
20, start in two days.
We assume you'll want to take part by telephone from Italy?
Four in the morning.
Right. Are there any future agenda items that, that we should take up?
The, only, just for the next meeting, and I, we are going to take up this, this student activities fee, and I, I'm going to propose a, I'm not proposing a reduction or an elimination, but I will be proposing a modification in the policy, and I want to be able to do, make sure it's discussion with possible action, so we can do that.
And, and you'll get your proposals, modifications, amendments to us in advance?
Ah, sure, absolutely.
Okay, good, all right. One other comment I should have mentioned before, the Passing and Sister Cities Committee had a, a day of concerts at Memorial Park on the 21st of, of May, and they had a lot of different groups performing, including a group from Pasadena City College, which was very well-received, and people were very impressed with the PCC and our group performing, and so I wanted to mention that and commend them and thank them very much for being a part of that, so. Purpose of that was to raise money for the people in Japan. We have a, Pasadena has a sister city in Japan, Mishima, and the, although Mishima was not directly affected, there are a lot of relatives and so people that are unaccounted for, and so the money that was raised by the Sister City Committee will go to the people of Mishima to help locate and assist the people in Northern Japan, so. Anything else to be brought up? If not, we are adjourned.